Good morning, uh, all these council members. So from today now on, I will be hosting the meeting for the remaining of the half a year. So glad to join, I'm glad to hold this meeting. So it's time to call to the order. Uh, okay. Uh, next one is committee regrets. There is none. Also, we have eleven agendas that we're going to discuss. And public hearing, I heard none as well. Presentation, none. So today we have, we have motion? Okay. Sorry. Oh, uh, anyone, any council has an announcement? Okay. It's Ms. Mayor, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out to everybody and thank them for their participation in Canada Day yesterday. It was a great event, uh, lots and lots of people there. And uh, thank you very much to staff as always for all the great work that they did in putting that together. I know that that's not a very, a small task by any stretch of the imagination. Um, but it certainly was an event that was enjoyed very much by our community. And uh, it was a great uh, time to celebrate Canada's hundred and fifty eighth birthday. Thanks very much.
Great, okay. Anyone else? No? Perfect. So next item is going to be the five delegations, right, Ms. Currie? Oh. Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. So number three, introduction, any emergency or time sensitive matters? None? Okay. Number four, adoption of dandus? Anyone want to move it? Okay, uh, councillor Silvies? That's it? All in favor? Next one, disclosure of peculiar interests and general nature there? Oh, yes. Uh, the motion carried. Number five, disclosure of peculiar interests and general nature thereof. Anyone? Okay, uh, councillor?
Uh, thank you. In regards to item number eleven point three, the twenty twenty-five community and cultural uh, grant program. Um, as a board member for the BIA, I need to declare, thank you.
Okay, uh, I believe I have the similar issue as well. So I'm have an interest conflict in the item as well, similar as councillor, uh, councillor Thompson. So that time being when we reached to that, I think we have to leave this. Yeah, I'm going to pass the chair to the best chair. Uh, councillor, councillor you. So number five, number six, uh, identification of items requires separate discussion. Anyone except the delegations, anyone has any other things to extract? Perfect. Thank you so much. Should I move motion or not?
Uh, yes, through Mr. Chair, if I might just suggest therefore that we actually hold eleven point three. Uh, because uh, two members have declared a conflict of interest. So at least that can be voted on separately, uh, without.
Thank you so much. So eleven point three will be in discussion as well. Okay. Except eleven point three, eleven point nine, eleven point eleven, also uh, twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point three, twelve point four, twelve point five. There are in the scope of discussion. Anything else?
Yes, I think um, the members' discussion, we're not voting on this time, right? Correct? Just, just to ensure for Mr. Chair. Um, I do have question one to raise. Well, actually, uh, there are also delegation for the member motion. But the one on specifically, we've uh, would like to see some clarification um, on the pickleball motion by Mayor West.
Oh, yes, thank you. I apologize. Uh, through the chair, I, yes, uh, according to our practices, all members' motions are automatically held.
That's what I thought, just.
If I might, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, eleven point eleven can go on consent because that's just the correspondence.
Sure. Thank you so much. So uh, so eleven point one, eleven point two, eleven point four, eleven point five, eleven point six, eleven point seven, eleven point eight, eleven point ten. Uh, will be moved for consent. So eleven and eleven, okay. So anyone has any, uh, let me, let me see the movers. Who want to move this remaining motion? Okay, Ms. Mayor, thank you so much. All in favor? She hasn't passed? Okay, let's go to the next one, delegation. Oh, we don't have a public hearing, we don't have presentation now, goes to delegation. The first delegation is ten point one. Uh, Mr. Michael Padakis. He will be here, believe he was in person or online, yeah? Please, Mr. Padakis, please announce your name. Also, uh, you have five minutes for speech. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Michael Padakis. I am a resident and employee in the town of Richmond, city of Richmond Hill. Uh, I am here to talk about the application for forty-seven Prince Arthur Avenue. Can you guys see things when I put them here? Yes, no? Is there a screen like? I'm going to give you a quick overview of the area, which you may not get from the report you received. And then I will present my concerns or uh, re-present my concerns. So this is Prince Arthur Avenue. This is thirty-seven Prince Arthur Avenue where I live. This is forty-seven Prince Arthur Avenue where the proposed development is going to be. This street goes down and I am at the bottom of the hill. This new development on this property here will be raised a meter, almost a meter and a half uh, above the current elevation. As you look down the street, this is the bottom of my street. This is his driveway, my driveway. There is a proposed retaining wall across the front and the property and road to be elevated one point two meters. I am concerned about the drainage from my property, which currently comes down the frontage, curves across a culvert that is on the city property and extends across the street and dumps into the forest across the way. With this new development, I continue to be concerned about the drainage for my property uh, with this new development. Considering my neighbors across the street are high, the neighbors behind me are also high, that I am being put into a bathtub with this new development. I was here for the July meeting uh, and noted in the minutes that I had raised questions. And noted in the agenda for this one that my concerns had been addressed. Uh, this is the um, proposed plan that was provided at the original meeting. Sure, it's.
Sorry to interrupt, yeah.
Sorry. Trying to stick to my time limit here. It isn't going. Um, and I note uh, extreme grade differences around the development and my property. This is the new plan that was, is part of your report, which uh, has not made any um, comment to the drainage. Uh, in fact, uh, continues to exacerbate the drainage problem with the retaining wall now going across the street uh, with new grades. Uh, with extreme drop offs between the proposed edge of this road and the new road there. Uh, my concern is that this property is not taking a holistic view of the neighborhood. On paper, in the black box, the design may seem sound. But when you look at the neighborhood around it, the streets, the topography, it just doesn't work right now. Um, I welcome any town engineers, planners, uh, Ward one councillor Carol Davidson, if you want to come down and visit and have a look and actually see what this site looks like and what this is going to do. I'm concerned about the drainage on my property. I'm concerned about the look and feel of the finished product. If my home becomes seen only as a development property, not a viable residence in the future, may affect my property value as well. Um, I understand that this uh, developer has property to the west as well. Um, my recommendation is that they work from the west towards the east and bring that grade change gradually over. Um, perhaps the extreme lot change at fifty-one and forty-seven, which is the property at the field. They're developing, can you see this field? It's also being developed. So perhaps that extreme grade change at the time, intermediately wise, happens here uh, in lieu of right next to my property over here. Uh, and affecting the surrounding area. I think that the Huey West infill study makes sense. But it makes sense when you can infill the entire area and not gradually smoosh out the existing residents that are there. Um, I welcome conversations with any planners, designers, engineers um, to discuss the plans with me. But from what I see in the new report, my original concerns have not yet been addressed. And that moving this forward with the addendum will relieve any other opportunities to um, bring problems to an approval board or a group like yourselves. So that is where I am at. And I feel there is not enough consideration yet for the entire neighborhood based on what this plan proposes. Any questions about what I have to say?
Good, thank you so much.
I will yield more remaining time if I have it.
So Ms. Currie, can I go over, go over all the delegation, then you come back? Okay, perfect. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next delegation is from uh, ten point two, it's uh, Ms. Joanna Fast. Yeah, please announce your name, also please keep your five minutes. Go ahead.
Um, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. My name is Joanna Fast. I'm with Groundswell Urban Planners and I act on behalf of the owner of forty-seven Prince Arthur Avenue, as well as fifty-one Prince Arthur, which is another application that was um, approved at the beginning of this meeting with no discussion. Um, with respect to the concerns of the previous delegate, um, through the application review process, um, a functional servicing report, including uh, detailed servicing and grading plans were submitted. Um, part of the plan is that the properties are going to be raised and there's going to be a retaining wall along the west property line. And that is because we have to also design for the ultimate um, condition of this community. Um, being that uh, you know, it's an infill and things are being done um, in pieces because there's various property owners. But ultimately, um, we have to make sure that we meet the grades for the road um, uh, to connect with Merchant Street to the east. And that the servicing design has to work. So the servicing for this property um, drains towards Merchant Street, which means that we have to raise the grade slightly so that the, there's enough cover. And I'm not an engineer, but this is my understanding. Um, that so that the services can appropriately drain in the right direction and get to the um, their ultimate destinations. Um, and so uh, through the design, uh, a rear lot catch basin is proposed along the westerly property line. All of the storm water on our site is being contained and will ultimately be directed towards Merton Street. And uh, there is the interim condition um, for our neighbor's property. It will continue to have its existing grades, but no additional water um, is being directed in that uh, direction. Um, so just with the nature of uh, infill development in this area and the ultimate plan, um, unfortunately, things have to be done in piecemeal. Uh, there will be further um, detailed design um, considerations through the draft plan of subdivision that has to be registered for number fifty-one Prince Arthur, as well as uh, future building permit and site alteration applications for number forty-seven for the uh, two semi-detached units.
Anything else?
That's everything, thank you.
Thank you so much. So we have third delegation, name is Carol Monroe. If I pronounce your names correct? Yeah. Welcome. Yeah. Please announce your name, you have five minutes.
Monroe, yes. Um, I'm here today to talk about pickleball. And uh, my, I'm uh, I'm talking about it from a personal experience point of view. Because although many people have played pickleball, many haven't. And um, it's, it is about people. It's about people, it's about health, it's about community. And um, I've been a resident of Richmond Hill for the past forty years. My husband and I moved here when we got married. He had been raised in this city, well, it was a town at the time. And uh, we have put roots down here. And um, we desire for this community to continue to thrive. I uh, discovered, discovered pickleball later in my life. Um, or perhaps I should say, I um, I had it discover me. And um, it's given me a reason not only to stay active, but to stay connected in the community. And um, I've made close friends. Um, I, it's built my confidence up. As I've aged, it's given my body um, more strength, more flexibility. I'm healthier, I'm sleeping better, I have more energy. Right now, I have two elders that I'm caring for. Um, and um, trying to work part-time and uh, I'm here this morning in spite of that. So um, I just really think pickleball needs to be a strong consideration for Richmond Hill. Because if we care about people in this city, then um, pickleball is a strong enabler of health, of community, of connection, of um, real um, health, health and vitality, I would say. Um, but I have to say, it's been very painful as I watched this council and uh, the decisions that have been made in regard to pickleball facilities and um, the future of pickleball here. Um, in, I understand in twenty twenty-two, there was a vote by council that was nine zero to support the David Dunlap Observatory Park Pickleball um, Plan. And um, there has been nothing. We're in two thousand twenty-five, so there's now three years past. There is no uh, pickleball facility there. And it's not clear that that has been canceled. Um, it would be helpful to understand if that in fact that has been canceled or what is going on with it. Um, now, um, we understand, my, my colleagues and I, now I've met more people in the community. Um, I understand from them and from others that um, Richmond Green um, is now the new pickleball destination for the city. Um, however, what's concerning about that is that pickleball there is, it's not clear when it's going to happen. There is a ten to twenty year phased-in plan for that um, site. And um, it feels like we're doing the same as we've done before. We're kicking the can down the, the path. And um, I don't really understand why that is. But before I became um, uh, semi-retired, I was a global business executive. And um, I have taken some time to look a little more deeply and to see what's, what's been going on. And I, I will give my um, understanding. But I've started to look and understand that there is money um, in uh, cash in lieu of Parkland Fund for things like pickleball. Um, so really, it's a question of what's happened with that money for Parkland, particularly Parkland that is very valuable for an activity like pickleball that has multi-values to a community like Richmond Hill, that desires to continue to be relevant and to thrive. But now, um, right now, there is a big gap between the needs of people and the, and the opportunity to meet those needs. People, families are having trouble getting activities for their kids to keep them off their screens. It's, it, pickleball is a really accessible thing for an all-family activity. It's also a multi-generational kind of activity. Listen, I have always been not a great person to exercise. Pickleball has made it easy. It has been, I play three to four times a week and it's made life easy. And I would encourage you to try and take it into your life because it will enable you to do more with your life and to feel better. What does that bell mean?
Uh, your time's up?
Okay, then, I just want to end then. I'm proud to live in Richmond Hill, but I'm also deeply concerned about how we've handled pickleball facilities. We, we have the resources. What we now need is the will and the determination to follow through, to act and to make this happen. And I would encourage us all to do so today.
Okay, thank you so much. So uh, our next delegation is coming from ten point four, Teresa Meoto? She's like, okay, she's online.
Hi, good morning, Mayor West, members of council. Uh, thank you so much, Carol, for your thoughts, um, your support. I'm following up on you, uh, your messages, um, and they were great points. Um, now, my name is Teresa Meoto and I'm speaking on behalf of the Richmond Hill Pickleball Community, including over twenty-four hundred members in our local network. Um, first, we'd like to thank you for tabling a motion that acknowledges the lack of pickleball infrastructure in Richmond Hill. But we must be clear, unless it includes timelines and concrete commitments, this motion risks becoming another placeholder in a long line of plans that have never been developed. Um, we've seen this with the cancellation of the David Dunlap Observatory Park Courts. And again, in the Richmond, Richmond Green consultation. That plan, which we participated in, did state that it's a ten to twenty year phased development with phase one potentially starting in five years. That's not a solution to our current crisis. Meanwhile, thousands of residents are being forced to play in overcrowded gyms, drive to Vaughan or Markham, or pay hundreds to access private facilities because Richmond Hill offers so few options. Let's be honest, if Richmond Hill is going to be the pickleball destination center that this motion refers to, then it must be done right. That means repurposing underutilized land like the seasonal baseball diamonds, spaces that sit empty nine months out of, out of the year and on weekday mornings in the summer. A properly designed pickleball complex with both outdoor and indoor courts would completely transform Richmond Green into a vibrant year-round destination park. It would relieve pressure on city staff, address resident frustration, and showcase Richmond Hill as a forward-thinking, active community. Pickleball Partners has reviewed strategies from across Canada, including cities like Newmarket, which have embraced best practices without waiting for years for consultant reports. They're now on track to be named Ontario's first pickleball-friendly community. We're not asking for a miracle, we're only asking for urgency. You've already invested in a consultant, but please let's not wait for another year-long study to confirm what we already know. Demand is exploding, pickle, residents are frustrated and court supply is not adequate. So we respectfully ask, please amend the motion to include clear timelines, goals, and a framework for public engagement. The Richmond Hill Pickleball Club is ready to help, but we need council to lead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So I believe I have last delegates, not least, ten point five, Claire Malcolmson. So yeah, I believe you are online, right? So. Morning, welcome. Okay, the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. Um, good morning, members of council. Uh, my name is Claire Malcolmson and I am the executive director of the Rescue Lake Simcoe Coalition. And I've been part of Stop Sprawl York Region and um, the Alliance for Livable Ontario York Region. So lots of involvement uh, with members, interested members of the community in York Region and uh, longstanding understanding of planning. And uh, actually, at this point, the expansion of the road network across York Region, which does bring us to salt pollution. Um, so I know I only have five minutes, so I'm just gonna do some high level, I make some high level comments. Uh, and I just want to say thank you very much to all of the members of public, of the public who, who submitted uh, letters of support for this salt motion. Uh, and for councillor Davidson as well for introducing it. Um, so the Ontario Salt Pollution Coalition really just started out at the end of twenty thirteen. And um, we realized at that point that there was an opportunity to get uh, some limited liability passed by the province of Ontario to help support the snow and ice management sector. Um, and I'll explain a little bit about this, but that's really fundamentally the focus of this campaign. We don't have tons of resources, so we're really focusing on the opportunity that we think exists. Um, next slide, please. I will say that the uh, the Ontario Salt Pollution Coalition is made up of groups from Ontario, from Sudbury to Niagara. And uh, we're really focusing on a municipal resolution. And this is the resolution. Um, it's, I believe it's identical to the one you have uh, in your, in your agenda package. So we're asking municipalities to ask the province of Ontario, really to do two things. One is to um, work uh, with the sector to develop limited liability legislation, including enforceable contractor training as a single set of provincially endorsed standard best management practices for the snow and ice management. And secondly, um, that we urge the province of Ontario to create and fund an expert stakeholder, stakeholder advisory committee to advise the province and municipalities on the best courses of action to protect freshwater ecosystems and drinking water from the impacts of salt pollution. Uh, the third point is to commit to reducing road salt as much as you can. And finally, to share this resolution. We're now up to seventeen municipal resolutions passed, including Toronto uh, just last week. So uh, we're really on a roll. We really appreciate that you're on a roll with us. Um, we really need uh, the minister environment to engage on this. And they're now apparently not, although we know their staff have been doing excellent research and have lots of information about this. Um, we need uh, Doug Downey, the attorney general, to move on this and also uh, Doug Ford. And we know that they're interested, but they seem to need some nudging. Next slide, please. So we're focusing on Ontario because we think there's an opportunity here and because Ontario applies uh, a little less than half the salt applied in Canada. And since the nineteen sixties, this problem has become a real problem. Uh, four hundred streams are monitored in Ontario and the amount of chloride in those water bodies has doubled since the nineteen sixties. And also, as we are, um, we have no more growth plan in Ontario. And this is like a sprawl-friendly um, uh, provincial planning regime. We're gonna have a lot more roads and frankly, roads equals more salt. So we, we have to address this. Uh, next slide, please. So the Credit Valley and Toronto Region, Central Lake, Ontario Source Protection Regions uh, put out a discussion paper last year, um, which makes clear that the excellent work that is being done and uh, by municipalities and those um, managers of all of these programs, they're not having enough effect. We need to do more than what is currently being done. And they're really highlighting the opportunity to reduce uh, to do limited liability. And so I think with my uh, remaining time, I might explain that. Um, so I'm just gonna explain, the limited liabilities package, I think just go to the next slide, is really to make sure that uh, if a snow and ice management contractor is actually following the rules, the property owner uh, is also making sure that their parking lot can be cleared of snow and ice and they're following best management practices, that they would have their liability limited. The reason this is important is that the sector is facing extremely high uh, insurance rates and it's actually forcing a lot of people out of the sector. Um, I think that's all I need to say, that's okay. Thank you. All right, I'm happy to take questions, but thank you very much for hearing me. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, appreciate all the efforts and from our delegation, thank you very much uh, for your time. And next one, we're gonna go over the topic. So I believe that's why the eleven point three, I have to pass my, my chair to our best chair? Or delegates first? Oh. Okay, sure. Then let's go over from the uh, delegation sequence. So eleven point nine, I, I need more here. So this is Ward one, so, okay. Thank you so much. So councillor, councillor Davidson, move it. Okay. Uh, yeah, go ahead if you want.
Thank you, um, and thank you to the delegate that came. Um, my understanding of this is that the infill is permitted. And I have received complaints from folks in the Merton and that entire area about those vacant lands being filled with garbage or wildlife or uh, in general, really, there are lots of folks in that neighborhood, I would say, want this kind of um, infill to make the community more whole. But my question, I have a couple of questions for staff through you, Mr. Uh, to Mr. Chair, which have come up since the delegate spoke. Um, why if the neighbor, the house next door that the delegate lives at, why? Why isn't, why is, was it not necessary for his house to be raised up? Is it because it's an older home? I'm confused about why now these houses need to be raised up to hook up to stormwater or water. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, to the councillor. Uh, the, the gentleman's house, who, the gentleman spoke earlier, that is obviously an older house that was built prior to uh, any of the new plans taking place. Uh, the, the gentleman's house, who, the gentleman spoke earlier, that is obviously an older house that was built prior to uh any of the new plans taking place. Uh, there is a lot of infill development, as you noted, in the area, and uh the designs for the greater subdivision in the area are, as explained, towards Merton Street. And that's why that house has its grading, which was approved a long time ago. It's not part of sort of the new plan of subdivision. But having said that, the new developments that are going in, including forty-seven Prince Arthur and the lands to the east, there is a focused uh development concept plan for that infill study, which includes a functional servicing plan, and engineering staff are reviewing that to make sure that the flows are proper in the area, and they take into account any um uh flows on the property itself. The water will be contained and, and would go to Merton Street. I, that's the general sort of high-level um review I can give you with respect to servicing.
Thank you. Um, through you, Mister Chair, can you tell me um what, does, does the city have any say, if someone has a piece of property in an infill study and the, and it, it checks off all the boxes, the suggestion was that we don't let this property be developed before another property. Does the city have any say on when a piece of property is developed if they jump through all the hoops of, of an application?
Uh, I'll, through you, Mister Chairman, ultimately, the council has the say in terms of approving a development proposal, which comes forward, and it has to be complete and address all the issues, including servicing and grading and any other matters that come. Um, but this is the, the, in this particular case, there's a coordinated review here because the lands also to the east are being developed on a larger scale. So everything's sort of been taken into account. All the details of design are being taken into account with respect to that, which includes improvements to the road itself.
Through you, Mister Chair, um has staff, can staff, in what ways can the city ensure that this house sort of in, squished in the middle a little bit can um will avoid flooding? And I, I completely understand the residents' concern. What, what kinds of checks does the city do to ensure that his house doesn't become a bathtub?
Through you, Mister Chairman, to the councillor. Uh, as noted in uh the uh, the gentleman's discussion, uh there's a site alteration process for the lands in question at forty-seven Prince Arthur, so there would be review of the site servicing and grading plans there. But there's also a detailed functional uh servicing review that's done for the plan of subdivision. So those are the, the uh, the technical um reviews that are being done by the city to ensure that drainage is contained and dealt with properly.
Through you, Mister Chair, is um, there an opportunity, well, maybe you've already spoken to the resident, um, but uh is staff available in the next week before this gets final approval to chat with uh with the resident about the water concerns?
Through you, Mister Chairman, uh perhaps I could refer the question over to our development engineering folks with respect to that, that. So we're sort of in between now, the planning uh uh process is sort of coming to an end with a potential approval here by council, and then the detailed design and review would be handed over to development engineering, so.
Uh, through the chair, and just to further uh provide some details, we would be happy to work with the uh the delegate that was here speaking about the property to, to his east, making sure that he's comfortable with what we're doing. And, and the commissioner is correct, the site alteration permit is the form of detailed design that we'll be using to ensure that there isn't any negative impact to existing properties, and this is common where you have infill development. Uh, and I'm fairly well-versed in that type of, that type of construction where you do have this kind of infill happening, where there are impacts that are possible. It's very important that you have a holistic approach with not just the initial set of dwellings that are coming in, but also, I understand, the subdivision that's coming uh just to the east and looking at that as a holistic plan, so that everything works together. And you're doing this once, you're doing it correctly, and we're involving all the residents. At the end of the day, they're happy with the product that they see.
Thank you. Uh, well, I would encourage the resident, either reach out to me and I can connect him with you folks, or connect with you directly. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, any other questions? Okay, uh, uh councillor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, uh through you, the chair. Uh, just a question for staff, in regards to this particular area, do we, do we know if um this street is currently having to use, say, sump pumps in a lot of those homes?
Uh, through you, Mister Chairman, I, I don't have that information handy, but we certainly can circle back to the councillor, to yourself, and uh, and provide that information.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Great, perfect. So, yeah, I strongly stress, uh our delegations, come back to your local councillor, also work with our city planning team and so development team to have further discussions. So in case of your personal or individual property issues, maybe uh with less look from overall, so later on, there might be a detailed design, so your concern definitely can be addressed through your local councillor. Okay, that is it. Any other questions so far? There, yeah, all in favor? Okay, motion passed unanimously. The next item, I believe eleven, eleven point eleven, but go to the twelve point five, right? Twelve point four. Okay, twelve point four, that's for Mayor's motion. So Mayor, you're gonna move the motion for discussion? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair. So Mister Clerk, I believe you have a slightly modified motion um to present today, and the, the modification is just one extra whereas clause that is referencing the tennis and pickleball strategy that's starting imminently. Um, and when I made this motion, the motion, I, I kind of assumed that everybody knew about the tennis and pickleball strategy, but um in speaking to a couple of people, including, including Teresa, who was a delegate today, I think it needs to be uh in there to just kind of um explain that, you know, part of the the larger picture here is for us to get this tennis and pickleball strategy started, so that it will ultimately guide and outline all of our investments that we're gonna be making in pickleball and tennis um in the next little while. But it'll also outline the, the public consultation part that is required, uh and is very important in this case, uh to make sure that we're consulting with folks that play pickleball, uh and, and also particularly the tennis and pickleball uh uh club that we have in, in, in Richmond Hill. So this motion is, is working in concert with the tennis and pickleball strategy, and, and what it essentially does is it outlines the, the tennis and pickleball infrastructure that we have right now, some of the, the quick wins that we can get to uh increase the inventory of tennis and pickleball uh courts in the next little while. Um, but I, as I said, I think the, the uh probably the, the meat and potatoes of this um this motion is to uh make it clear that, I think through all the work that's been done in the last little while, it's pretty clear to me that um Richmond Green is really going to be the best location uh to build a facility like this. And I know that we're going through the Richmond Green master planning process as well right now, which is really fortunate, because it will outline what Richmond Green is going to turn into in the coming years. And I think what this motion is saying is that the, the Richmond Green facility is definitely the one that I think is the most um is, is our quickest uh win to get a, a significant uh pickleball uh facility in that particular location. So I think that the number of different things that are coming together here, I think is advantageous, and this motion kind of tries to solidify that advantage so that we can get um some early wins, which, you know, are, are not as significant, but the more significant win is to get the, the larger pickleball facility done as quickly as possible. So um, I, you know, I appreciated the delegations, and um I think when people come and have come in the past about pickleball, there's just no question in my mind, the benefit the pickleball plays in our community. It is a, you know, without going into repeating everything, it, it certainly is one that involves lots of people. It's a very social sport. It brings the community together. There's huge health benefits and so on and so on and so on. And I think we all know that on council, and that part is, is a, is a given. So I think what we need to do in Richmond Hill right now is, is to move this along as quickly as we can, so that we can ultimately see the kind of um facility that, that is envisioned to, both for the people that play on a casual basis and don't necessarily want to play in a club atmosphere. Uh, and we have neighbourhood courts now, you know, for that type of activity, but we, and, you know, and even uh tennis courts that are, are re-lined so that, you know, both tennis and pickleball can play in, in some of our less popular tennis and pickleball um courts, and the, and the neighbour, the kind of that community group can play in those community types of facilities. But there's a really an opportunity here for Richmond Hill to have a larger facility that can host tournaments, that can host uh larger play. Pickleball is a, is a sport that really does require um a little bit of organization, so that people are playing with people in like-skill levels and, and so on. So I think all of that needs to come together, and we need to get this done as quickly as possible. And, and I will be looking for staff to move this along with the proper consultation and making sure that we get it right, but to move it along as quickly as we can. Um, I was saying, I was talking to Teresa a couple of times about this from the Pickleball Association, and I, I basically said, you know, there's two challenges here uh with, with creating pickleball. One is, is financial, and, you know, we have financial challenges when we're building any facilities. It doesn't matter whether it's pickleball or baseball or soccer or whatever. I mean, there's always money that's involved in that. And, you know, and using the money that we have in, in reserves and, and in, in um yeah, capital money that's earmarked for things like recreation to spread it out over the different types of recreational opportunities that we have in Richmond Hill. But the second challenge that's really important in, with pickleball is noise. And, you know, we can't be building a large number of courts in a location that's very close to uh houses. And I think at the end of the day, you know, in retrospect, the DDO plan came about maybe without the, the proper amount of consultation to determine the, the right location. But the DDO lands were, are going to be problematic for large-scale pickleball, because there are houses like right next to it. And, you know, I know what happened in Niagara, where they built this big, beautiful uh facility, and then the community was really upset about the noise, and they ended up shutting it down. And we do not want to have that happen here. This will be a significant investment, both for the benefit of the community, but also in money terms. So we need to make sure we keep it away from um, from people uh living there. And most of the parks that we have or will acquire in the future are going to be close to people. So the Richmond Green facility, I think, is the best location from a number of different uh perspectives. Um, so, you know, this motion outlines that, you know, that Richmond Green, it, it will be the preferred location. We'll finish the Richmond Green master plan, and most importantly in this regard, we'll get the tennis and pickleball strategy going. Am I out of time? Okay, well, there's no, there's no clock, so it's hard. Just take it off so we can see the, the time. Anyway, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't know that. But um, but the um, basically, what we'll try to do is, is get that in as quickly as possible, so that we can get uh we can get this moving along, and then, and we can get people playing in, in this facility. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maybe you can go to the second one. Okay, uh, councillor Silvies.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and may I say you're doing a very good job. It's councillor Tree's first time uh being our chair for committee of the whole. So it's, and we have a very extensive agenda, so well done. You're doing very well.
Thank you.
Um, okay, to speak to the matter at hand, um I fully support Mayor West.
Sorry, I'm not on here. I fully support Mayor West's um uh Mayor West's motion. Um, I want to thank uh the delegates who spoke, both in person and online, and everybody that has sent in um uh communications to us. It's deeply appreciated. And I just would like to speak first to the matter of the DDO uh cons- concept for pickleball courts. So I have, we have spoken about this many times in council and committee, including at the David Dunlap Observatory Park um steering committee, of which I am chair. Um, and I believe, the, the best, the best way to put it is that I believe there was, there was a very large misunderstanding about what was in front of us, and I, I am, I, I bought into that too. It was a concept. It was nothing that was uh, that, that was put on paper, that this is what we are going to do. It was a concept that, that was um, that was presented to the public for further con- con- conversation and for further discussion, and that's exactly what we did. And when we continued this discussion, it was found, as Mayor West said, that the people, our residents living in the neighbourhood just to the west of where the Panhandle is situated, there was a huge problem there. A, it was not, it was not the um, the required um meter, fifty meters from a house to facility. Um, and it was um, there had been, as, as, as Mayor West said, there'd been a lot of discussion about another facility in Niagara that had, that had had to shut down because of noise. Um, we have new pickleball courts that have opened at Bayview Hill. And um, I know from people speaking with me as well, just privately, that they can hear that pickleball, even if they are way out of fifty meters from that park. So it is, it, it is also an issue. We have to balance and weigh everything. So it is an issue that we also have to weigh. Um, so I, from my perspective, and yes, nine at the time on council certainly did say, yes, let's, let's move forward. But we were moving forward for further discussion, further investigation. And on further investigation, it was found that this would not work at all. There will be something that goes in there, but it cannot be an outdoor pickleball facility. Um, if anything, it would have to be enclosed, and that's just not the right space to put this. There is no question that Richmond Green is the right space. It might be further east and not as central as everybody would like. But that is where we are concentrating on uh putting um, putting a, a three sixty-five facility, and I fully support that. So for anybody, um, and I know I spoke to um Mike Bocart about it as well, and I said that at the time, yes, I would support, uh, I would support this. But again, on further investigation, it became, we became acutely aware that that particular piece of land was absolutely not suitable um for the construction of outdoor pickleball courts. Um, with respect, I understand how much pickleball is beloved by our, our residents, and I understand its importance. But I do wish to say that I don't agree that we are not doing enough. I believe we truly are doing enough. We have built more courts. We have lined more courts indoors. We continue to build more courts. We have the pop-ups, which are now, we're hopefully going to become permanent, and which we're gonna build a permanent um, a, a permanent facility. And all of this takes money, and yes, you were, there was a discussion about Parkland uh in, in Lou. I can assure you that whenever it comes to the, our capital uh budget discussions, we are absolutely aware of that, and it is taken into consideration. So I, I ask that our residents be a bit more patient. I know it's difficult, but we are doing our very, very best to ensure that our pickleball enthusiasts within Richmond Hill are being appropriately served. And that, and that's another question, if I may, Mister Chair, it's got for our Richmond Hill residents. There are many people outside of Richmond Hill who also want to use these facilities. We have to make sure that our Richmond Hill residents are, are taken care of first. So I hope that helps explain it a little bit better. Um, as with any member on council, I'm open to any dis- further discussion with anybody about this matter. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh councillor Silvies. Next one, Deputy Mayor Godwin-Cheek, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair, and uh thank you, uh Mayor West, for bringing forward this motion. And thank you specifically to the two delegates uh who came to speak to us. Much appreciated. I understand the frustration of the pickleball players. I've been in the Richmond Green courts at least two seasons, two tournaments, one most recently, one last year. It was always popular, and I have been to the indoor ones, so in the uh Woodswood. Uh, it's almost, I heard, impossible to get even uh time there unless we are in the morning. So I gather um, the reality is, there is a gap, and I think it's important as well, between the growing demand as well as available courts. But I think also the reality is, regardless of what um the city is doing, that we are only catching up. We're always kind of behind, so to speak. And I personally noticed, particularly during Covid, uh actually become increasingly popular. And um, and the challenge is that the expectation, and I do understand, I think both delegates mentioned that about um the timelines. I think it would be in terms of expectations, and I honestly feel the community who are active pickleball players um would like to have, oh, are we talking about twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven? So that um there was some kind of time target to shoot. So that um, there was some kind of time target to shoot for. In the meantime, people might still drive up to Stoville or Maccom or wherever. Um, so having said all that, I think. I think probably all nine of us sitting on this side are, are keenly aware or accurately aware of what the gap is. And I think this motion, uh, perfect or imperfect, depending how we see it, is the right direction. And it gives uh the first step, in particular, I appreciate the additional costs that actually tie in with the strategy. So it's a plan. There's not an ad hoc kind of, you know, whoever should allow us get the most attention. And that's not right either because we are managing public money. Um, so a thoughtful um, a way of um, engaging the neighborhood. Who may be at a potential proposed site is must be uh, must be done. And I know that firsthand as a local W six counselor. Previously, when the two courts were put in the King's College Park and Valenby. And I got swarmed by all the complaints, not by the pickleball players, by the neighbors and the speaker before me, what you're talking about. Right? People uh want to start early, but in the summertime. Uh, so there's something that as a council, as responsible uh, um, uh, custodian of the public funds and. And, and, and programs have to balance that. Um, yes, I concur that um, the committed timeline is something that we need to strive for. And I think staff are listening very carefully in terms of formulating with the strategy. Yes, we have to look at in terms of, in comparison with our uh, population growth. And also maybe with neighboring municipalities where we stand. So in terms of why uh, uh, it comes to the budget time, in terms of priorities, how we can do it. Certain things can be investment, can be speed up and in uh, the mayor's words, achieve some quick wins. Um, now, one thing that perhaps is not relating to the motion per se. And perhaps in the, as a strategy, I'm just saying they can comment. Uh, staff may want to even see what kind of court inventory in other non-city-owned facility. I was just at the war uh, um, uh, Canadian Legion yesterday, a Canada celebration. Apparently they are trying to transform uh, one of their uh, uh, big room into a, a future um. Uh, pickleball court, assuming all the health and safety concern are there, uh, I mean, are taken care of. So that's one aspect, maybe from the strategy perspective. In addition to a city-owned facility, to what extent that we can help, encourage or include are those. In private, whether it's in faith, organizations, whereas in places I just mentioned about like the Legion could be included upon. And I'm sure that our active uh, pickleball community network club I came across uh, in the city would help. To help all of us to really uh nail the gap as soon as we can. So uh, I'm in full support of that, uh, of the motion moving others ahead. But from the strategic perspective, really looking at city-owned. As well encourage non-city-owned facility to have more uh, pickleball courts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Next one, uh, Counselor Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do echo the, uh, uh, the previous speakers, um, especially Counselor Silvies, very well said. And uh, and I do agree with uh, all of the above. And no doubt, um, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in North America, maybe in the world too. So, and uh, not only Richmond Hill, I think all other neighboring cities, they're all trying to catch up. And I know that people from outside Richmond Hill come here to play. And sometimes we have to go to New Market, Aurora, um, to play pickleball. And uh, I'm happy to see the uh, the motion in front of us, uh, moved by uh, uh, our Mayor West. Uh, very, very practical and very creative. I'm, I'm really like seeing we transforming the ice rink into the pickleball court. And it is really, really creative. And all we are trying to do is to increase more inventories and I know that is never enough. And I'm, I'm, I'm very happy that I advocated for the four uh, pickleball courts at uh, Bayview Hill. Um, even though there are potential noise issues, but uh, touch wood, so far so good. And I hope the players enjoy um, the beautiful courts at uh, at Bayview Hill. And you know, it's a, it's funny thing I, I pass by a lot and, and, and you notice that during daytime. The pickleball courts are all fill up and, but not the tennis courts. And you can see the, 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 the transition, you know, from, because you know, people from age, all ages um, around me. They're now playing pickleball courts. When you go to the sports store, you can see the pickleball section is getting bigger and bigger. So no doubt, uh, and I think this motion is a good start. And it shows uh, the public that council has the will and determination to, to promote and to build more pickleball courts. Uh, but um, as uh, Deputy Mayor said, uh, I, I, I hope the residents have been more patient. We're working on it. I just have one question. Um, any idea through you, uh, Mr. Chair, to staff, any idea when that uh. Pickleball and tennis strategy will be completed?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if I could direct that question to Director Flores.
Through the chair, um, the public consultation component of the tennis pickleball strategy will begin the fall of this year. A draft should be available uh, to report back to council before the summer of twenty twenty-six. And it's anticipated that the final will be brought forward in Q one, twenty twenty-seven. Yep, the public consultation will begin this year in the fall.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I'm fully support this uh, motion. Thank you, Mayor West.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Liu. And next one, Counselor Cara Silvies. Oh, Cara, sorry, Cara Davidson.
Thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to say I absolutely support this. And I agree that I think the city is doing a lot. We're always talking about pickleball, looking for places to put it. I brought forward a motion to consider uh, temporary, as long as we can have it, Gormley uh, Go Station parking lots. We're looking at that. But I also want to say, as, in terms of location, Elgin Mills is actually kind of more in the middle. And it certainly is easier for Ward One residents to play and other re- residents in other wards. So I think the location is great. There's uh, public transit there. Um, and there's a lot of focus on, on pickleball and I agree, it's a growing sport. But honestly, I get just as many and certainly more requests for the city to use our funds to build more ice rinks. To build more um, soccer fields, to build more pools. Um, there are also people who want proper, I think they're green tennis courts. I'm not a tennis player. So I feel like the city is moving forward with a bit of a preference for pickleball over some of these other sports. But other residents want other sports too. So we have to be really careful how we use our limited resources. And I feel like between this council and staff, we're really trying to maximize. And be as fast as we can to provide those recreational opportunities for pickleball lovers. So those are my comments and I really appreciate this um, this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Counselors. Counselor Davidson. So next one, uh, Counselor, Counselor Michael Su.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the Dallas Gay uh, for uh, expressing your concern about pickleball facilities across our city. And I uh, I appreciate Mayor West for proposing this motion and I really think it's a good initiative and I'm going to support this. Uh, and I also agree with what Counselor Silvies said, uh, when we are first proposing the concept. Uh, sixteen courts in the DDO Park in twenty twenty-two is only the concept. And we have to consult the nearby resident and the public consultation further and also co- and also concern about our budget. So I think it's not confirmed yet, actually. It's just proposed at the committee in the DDO committee in twenty twenty-two. And I've got a lot of, a huge amount of backlash from the nearby residents, like. Because the proposal uh, for the sixteen courts in uh, at the DDO Park is located in the han- handle area. And the handle area of the DDO Park is very close to Burbank Crescent and the Gable Park community. And, and I've got a lot of backlash and the negative comment. If we put sixteen courts in the handle area of the DDO Park, that would be a disaster there. Because it's very close to the nearby residents and it will generate a huge impact of noise and light pollution. And you, you can imagine if a sixteen course is playing altogether, it will be very noisy. And you, you know what? In uh, King's College uh, Park, there are only two outdoors court. And in the summertime, I've got a tons of complaints, like uh, uh, Deputy Mayor mentioned. I've got tons of complaint in every year, s- summertime. I've got a lot of complaints, only two outdoor courts. So we have to get a balance between the neighbor's quality of living. And also the pickleball's players' interest. We have to get a balance of this. So I, I think it, we need more public consultation as uh, Mayor West proposal said. And also I would uh, bring one more point. I want to highlight one more possible site for consideration, whereas baseball diamonds. In my ward, in my ward, Ward Six, uh, Restofon Park, there are two uh, baseball diamonds. And one of them has been closed permanently for years and is, and is unused. I uh, understand that we are waiting for the next stage of the park's revitalization plan, but unfortunately, there's no confirmed timeline yet. And I understand it's more complex to convert a baseball diamonds into a pickleball court. But I do believe it's still better than leaving a space unused, sitting unused for years. What a wasteful. So I just hope that the, 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 the city can consider one more possible site to transform. Uh, an idle and unused uh, baseball diamonds. Transform it into a pickleball court because uh, a basement diamonds is a very large places. And we can accommodate of uh, 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 numbers of um, pickleball courts there. So I, I, I do think, I hope the city can uh, handle this issue in a more flexible way. That's all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, Counselor Michael Su. Next one is Counselor Scott Thompson.
Thank you very, very much. Uh, through the chair, I do have a question for the mover. Um, you're indicating with your motion that you're contemplating. You know, that you want staff to contemplate whether this could occur in, in phase one, which I, I think is quite appropriate. Uh, but the other things that you mentioned are providing um, indoor when the ice is out of uh. Both Elgin Barrow Arena and Bond Lake Arena. But with that contemplation, would that also be for ongoing or just until something, until the uh. Final project gets worked out at Richmond Green?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll call it temporary for now, but I mean, the, the reality is that the, the growth of pickleball is, is growing leaps and bounds. So you know, anything that we're doing, that we can continue to do, uh, I think we should continue to do. So um, th- those facilities, I mean, they sit idle when the ice is out and they're, they're just, you know, they're not doing anything. To, to produce um, a vi- a vibrant uh, space that can be used for activities, I think we, is really the goal of what we're always trying to do around here. So um, I mean, they can start out happening as soon as they can uh, start out. But I would suggest that if this works out, which it probably will. Um, then you know, we could be doing it year after year after year until further notice. Um, you know, and it, it's similar, if, if I may, to the, to the, 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 what we were calling the pop-up courts. I mean, those pop-up courts, I, I don't foresee them going away. I, I, but what I do see is there's going to be, there would be a new facility in Richmond Green that would uh, you know. Be adding to the, the inventory, but I don't see any reason why we would take away those courts. Because ultimately, if the, if the demand for usage is there, and I'm pretty confident it would be. Um, we would continue to do it. And, and this motion actually contemplates improving those uh, courts. And kind of giving a nod to the fact that, you know, th- they're not going to be temporary. They're going to be something that we'll be using into the future.
Uh, thank you for the answer. Um, given, given that, um. I, and I don't know what type of uh, work would have to go into making, you know, those uh, arenas. Uh, viable for, for doing that, but I think like, like you had said, uh, we're talking about pop-up. Um, so from a cost perspective, if we do go down that road. Um, it sounds like something that we should continue. Perhaps staff could explain, like, once you do something like that. Is it hard to shift gears and go into something else?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If, if I understand your question, you're asking if, once we line the courts in the arenas. If we could then change it in the future if we needed to?
Uh, sort of, I, I'm, because I, I don't really know what all would be involved when you do something like that in an arena. I don't even know if you have to drill holes so that you have the posts for the nets and those types of things. So uh, that's where my question is more uh, around.
All right. So through you, Mr. Chair. So our intention is to just line them and use uh, portable nets for the time being. Um, so that will be a relatively simple process. We do need to ensure we have staff at the arenas available, which is why. Um, Elgin Barrow is going to be the first one that we try because we already do have staff there in the summer.
Hmm, okay. I appreciate the answer. Um, those are all my questions and I'm fully in support of this motion. Thank you.
Okay, I think this is round one, so I'm gonna be the last one maybe ask question. So I do have a few questions here as well. So uh, regarding to the, the cost, I'm just wondering, because we talk about indoors, pop-up, pop-ups. Uh, as a highlight, well, how much money if you build up any uh, uh, any doom type of the designs? Like the double soccer ball in the Richmond Green, we do have a soccer ball doom there, it lasts for long. So just from the budgeting or cost perspective, if you build out some indoors under the doom. How much money going to be that one will be costing? Three million, four million, five million dollars, just for cost perspective?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm, I'm not sure.
The doom, the doom one, you know, the bubble.
The bubble.
Yeah, if, if we have a similar size of bubble, it's a, how much money going to be cost, just for pickleball?
So I do know, and, and um, the, the DDO facility that was sixteen courts with the bubble was estimated to cost nine point four million.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much. Wow, okay. Uh, my next question is, is that the feasibility is, we put the bubbles at the Richmond Green Park? Is that possible or feasible? From, just from physical location perspective?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I think you mean on the, on the pop-up net?
Yeah, that's right.
No, that, that's not possible because the, the pop-up maps are on the salt uh, storage area. And you, we, we, we don't want to make any permanent uh, changes to that area because it has to be used as a snow dump in the winter.
Okay, so another one is for Bayview's, I, I can remember, Bayview's has the twenty-four seven services, right? Do have lights uh, running at nighttime. Just regarding to the green, Richmond Green, I haven't seen the master plan yet. So if this is going to be the order, is there possibilities in future designs, we have a lights, which can be running for twenty-four seven hours? Let's see in case if someone won't play at nighttime, you still have chance.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I refer the question to Director Flores on that.
Through the chair, if a similar facility were to be put in Richmond Green, yes, uh, there would be lights similar to those in Bayview Hill.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, I believe, uh, yeah, I also make all my questions, but I want also bring a few facts here. So just in case in future we have a similar uh, issue hap- happening again, so there is some kind of uh, uh, discussions or turnovers. So there, I went to the side, there was a few feedback from the players. The first one is, when we design open the uh, the uh, the courts, the lineup is very close to each other. So uh, we have repainted all the line on the ground. So in this case, in future, we have a similar uh, project in other facilities. Please try to learn lessons from there. We don't do, redo the works again. The second one is the separator of fences between different courts. The hole in each uh, fence is too big, so the pickleball can pass through. Even we put kind of protector underneath by the hole, the, the ball is just flying anywhere through the fence. So uh, there's only two factors, just in case in city we have a similar uh, project. Please just remember a lesson learned from there. Thank you. I don't have further questions. That is round one. I'm going to go to the round two. So Mayor West, round two, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Uh, okay, so just a couple of wrap-up comments. Um, so first of all, part of this motion does, was an examination of what oh, city-owned facilities could we use to gather extra inventory? So, so that's where the, the arenas came.
to gather extra inventory. So so that's where the the arenas came in and the relining of of uh the gymnasium in in Richmond or Rich Vale Community Center. There may be other facilities that we can add some pickleball courts uh as time goes on, but and that's a good thing. But ultimately, the the ultimate um goal, I think, uh, in my mind, in this, in this motion, is to create a a larger facility. As I said earlier, pickleball is a sport that really does require lots of people to come together and have, you know, games that are somewhat organized. And and I think this is where uh a multi-court facility is really, really important. So adding a few courts here and there is definitely something that's that I want to continue to try to do, and especially the lowest hanging fruit. But ultimately, the the larger facility in my mind is the goal. I I would love to give timelines um to this and I, but the problem is, if I do that right now, I I won't be giving you accurate information. So I think we're at a point now where the the tennis and pickleball strategy is starting like imminently. Um, we need to move that along as quickly as possible. But I think one of the things that I I'd like to uh be able to to give staff notice that I'm going to be bugging you about is that, you know, while the tennis and pickleball strategy goes on, while the the Mill Pond, uh, sorry, Mill Pond, the Richmond Green Master Plan goes on, we can do other work to to get ourselves ready for creating the facility that we're ultimately going to need to be creating. So, you know, we can chew gum and and walk at the same time, and I think we need to be expediting this process as as quickly as possible. And by the time the tennis and pickleball strategy is moving forward, I think we should have a clear vision as to when an accurate timeline for completion of this project will be. And at that time, um, I will, you know, I can assure you that I will be telling you uh what that will be. But at the present moment, I don't want to give you a a date and then knowing full well that we don't have all the information to say that that date is accurate. So anyway, I appreciate the support on council of this. Uh, this is something that I think council is united on to try to get uh this job done. And I think, you know, it is really exciting that uh Richmond Green would be a very appropriate location for this. It is a very much a themed um center of Richmond Hill kind of park universe in many ways, but it's also a very much of a sports-themed uh facility. So I think the addition of significant pickleball, uh, significant pickleball facility in that location and and one that can be used in in most, if not all, seasons. And and again, the details of this need to be contemplated. It is going to be a fairly significant uh investment in our recreation infrastructure, but I think it's one that is used a lot. And and as I think it was Counselor Liu said, you know, every time I've seen the the new pickleball facilities that we have at uh Bayview Hill and that and others, I mean, they're always busy. And and it's not just like a couple of people. It's like way more people than you'd expect for the for a space that's frankly smaller than tennis. So um, I think that pickleball does give us a a significant bang for our buck. And so uh, anyway, I'm I'm happy to support this. And I'm gonna stop now, so I'm giving you back the minute and twenty seconds of that.
Okay, round to uh Counselor uh Silvys.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and and thank you to uh to my colleagues for this very, very important discussion. There was just a few things I wanted to follow up on. Because I'm sitting here and I see the disappointment in Ms. Monroe's face. And um, I just want to address that. I hope that the pickleball community can understand that we are doing our absolute best to catch up to a situation to which we are behind the eight ball. And that's not our fault. That's pickleball's fault because pickleball took off like an explosion. So um, I I just wanted to, again, just reassure you, reassure um our other delegate, anybody else who's online listening to this, that we absolutely are doing our very best to to try and bring these pickleball courts in it to better fruition for everybody's use. However, it it must also be understood and respected by the pickleball community that we have uh soccer, we have baseball, we have basketball, we have tennis, we have ice skating rinks. And all of those deserve the same consideration. Pickleball is without a, without a doubt right now a priority, but it absolutely, ev- every single one of these sports deserves the same amount of uh discussion and the same amount of attention. Uh, because we have very finite fin- finances in order for us to be able to uh do what we do do when it comes to um public works. And we are also confined by certain legislation that we can only use certain money for certain issues. So I know that a lot of people look at this as, oh, there's so much red tape, so much red tape, it's never, never gonna happen. Rather than looking at it as as red tape, I I would, I would, I would respectfully suggest to everybody that you look at it as your municipality using its taxpayers' money to the very, very best of our abilities. I can't imagine what kind of rioting we would have up Young Street. Should we want to increase tax, uh, our tax um uh taxpayers' amount every year in order to try and um build all the pickleball courts immediately that are necessary? There is no way that would be agreed upon by the majority of our residents. So we have to also take that into consideration. Um, and and whatever comes our way through through capital budget is very, very specific, as I said, as to how we are going to use it. And and as the Commissioner said, we also have to take into consideration staff, space. So there are many, many things that we have to consider and we ultimately make make those decisions um on on your behalf. That's why we're elected. I mean, for instance, in Ward Five, I I've had many, many requests for Tannery Park and um Rich Vale to have um more courts. We are relining the courts in indoors, thank goodness. But Tannery, we can't do anything there because it's it's within that fifty-meter um uh limit and we can't put uh uh pickleball courts there. It's impossible. So anytime I get a a request from from a resident, I do explain that to them uh as best as, as best as I possibly can. And lastly, um, if I may, through you, Mr. Chair, uh to our director. Uh, just to follow up on what Counselor Xu, also our Vice Chair of the DDO um Steering Power Committee, uh was was saying about the concept for the sixteen courts. It, could you confirm for me, please, and publicly, that it is my understanding that that concept is dead? I think it is very necessary. If you are unable to do that, perhaps our city manager can help us or the Commissioner. I think it's very necessary for our um, for for the public to understand exactly where we where we stand right now with that concept. Not to put you on the spot. Do you want to answer?
Through the chair, my understanding from the council direction that it was paused pending the tennis pickleball strategy. However, I I've not been involved with the 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 discussions at the DDO Steering Committee. I don't know if that's evolved. I
Thank you.
My understanding is it's paused.
Paused, that that's a better word than dead. Uh, thank you. Commissioner, through you, Mr. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Steele, can you help us with that, please? I just, I would like the public to truly understand where we are there. And we are not shortchanging our pickleball uh re- enthusiasts at all.
Through you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is the same. The last thing on record from council is that it's paused.
Okay, good. Thank you. It's paused. Okay, and it's paused for a good reason. It's paused because we have to have further consultation and further public input. Um, so uh, that that's all I wanted to say. Again, thank you to everybody. And and really, my thanks to staff. They are, they are working very, very hard on this in an attempt to bring everything forward to satisfy our pickleball enthusiasts and our residents. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any, anyone? Okay, the motion is on the floor, so we should have, okay. Uh, any, any opposed or all in favor? Okay, all in favor. So we have them passed. Okay. The next item should be the uh twelve point five, let me remember. Yeah, twelve point, motion for Counselor Davidson's uh salt pollution from the road salt. So uh, Miss, Counselor Davidson, you want to move it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Line was what some of the other municipalities are doing. And since there are so many environmentally sensitive areas in Richmond Hill, I think we um would be well served to look at how we, how we treat salt. I think the key that I sort of learned over the last little while is that when the city hires contractors, it's recommended salt, but it's not really binding. So um, the motion includes asking the city to work with the province and enforce training to contractors. I think most of the residents in my neighborhood ask about reduction in salt when they see a big pile. And I know there's, we have to balance safety and snow and all the other things with this. But this is sort of an opportunity to say we're cognizant of salt issues and we're going to work towards reducing our salt use. I don't know if I need to write this in there, but part of the city's efforts for me is educating the public because I know that salt is also used by residents and times that by fifty-five thousand households or however many we have. That's also a contributing factor. So I hope council supports this. It's a, just a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, any other members want to talk? Nobody? Okay, motions on the floors, all in favor? Okay, the motion passed unanimously. The next one is motion to uh twelve point one, uh, Counselor Liu. You want to move it? Eleven point three. Okay, eleven point three. Okay, I then have delegate my chairs to the Vice Chair, uh, Counselor Liu. So myself and also Counselor uh Scott, we can uh stand.
All right, thank you very much. I'm a because uh Counselor Thompson and Counselor Tree declare pecuniary interest. Okay, so can I have someone to move the motion? Uh, Mayor West?
Yeah, I'm happy to move this motion. And in fact, I'm really pleased to see this larger uh contingent of recipients on this uh particular uh slate, uh, now that we've increased the uh, the number of uh, or the amount of money that we're able to give out. And I think if you look at the uh, at the overall uh picture of what's gonna happen once we've, uh, this money has started to uh, to work its way through the system and and start to uh come out the other end of the pipeline and benefit uh our, you know, our our residents. There's just gonna, going to be a whole bunch of activities that these uh worthy recipients are going to be able to put forward to benefit our community. And that really is ultimately the goal of this particular uh grant uh program. So I'm real pleased to see that. And uh, to the the people who are, to the organizations that that receive those uh, those monies, uh, thank you very much for the, for your proposals and for what you're going to do. And uh, for those that didn't receive it, and I know that there were some, uh, make sure that you apply next year because this is an ongoing yearly uh process. And uh, we are looking for innovative and uh excellent ideas to uh increase the uh the quality of our cultural and uh community offerings in Richmond Hill. Thanks very much. I'm happy to move the motion.
Um, next is uh Regional Council Deputy Mayor Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And uh, like uh Mayor West just said and moving the motion, I'm happy to support the motion because when I'm looking through um, then roughly that uh, we're talking about um among the applications that we got, which is more than uh, almost, well, fifty-eight actually in the report. And um, I'm glad to see about uh, almost uh, what, roughly around forty percent or so of the applicants uh with the submission or application uh have been approved. And in fact, I'm particularly pleased to see that um, not only the one that were commanded for approval is actually uh from a very diverse uh range of organization, but also that um, from what I can see, uh, relating to youth, relating to seniors, uh, some may be a one-day event, some may be uh on the weekend. Uh, so this is something certainly um, very much that um, as the mayor said, that we as a city uh continue to help to uh really our community-based organizations to do as much as enriching our um diversity in terms of celebration. Uh, so I'm full support of that. And hopefully, we might have more resources in the future to uh support more organization that's serving um our residents of all ages. Thank you. So I'm in full support, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Davidson.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I fully support this too. If you look at the list, it is so varied from social issues to sports to all kinds of things. And it's really, to me, it's seed money because a lot of these organizations end up doing things for the bigger community. And um, the city can't do everything. So this really helps other groups that are really good at something offer things to the whole community. So it's excellent. And I'm so glad this, this council reinstated the community grants. So I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Seeing none, um, just have a quick question. Um, I, how do I phrase it? Um, I can see, usually I, I see nonprofit organization applying for the grant. But um, on the list, I see some individual um names. Is is that normal? Because those names related to some organization. But why do we put the individual names instead of the organization? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, through yourself.
Oh, through, oh, yeah, okay, through myself. Oh, where's the chair? All right, me, all right.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Um, so the community and cultural grant program has always been open to individual individuals, particularly individual artists is what most of them are.
Okay, so we write the check to the individual instead of the organization?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, they they usually aren't, they're not necessarily associated with an organization. They represent themselves. And and typically, those ones, I I'm speaking generally, um, typically they are artists who are proposing some sort of art exhibit.
Hmm, and and is there a monitoring mechanism that we, they have to prove that they actually do, the thing they they committed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's correct. We we do follow up and make sure the pr- the the projects are implemented, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, seeing no, no more questions, all those in favor, opposed, carry unanimously. Thank you. That's my motion. Okay, thank you. All right, so, so I'm still the chair, but Counselor Davidson moved it, right? Oh, they're coming back.
Oh, they're coming.
All right, yeah, okay.
Good much of well, for West Chair, uh, Counselor Liu.
Thank you. So uh, this is a pretty straightforward and uh, and 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 you know, the the motion speaks for itself. And I would like to thank staff for helping me draft this motion. I'm looking for it, sorry. Um, yeah, so as all, as we all know that twenty twenty-six is the uh, the World Cup. It's in uh Canada, Mexico and the US, and this is the first ever um Canada hosting the uh, the World Cup. So I think this is once-in-a-lifetime opportunity um, that we can do something to bring the community together. What I'm asking here is, you know, we look into the budget and see if we can um host some viewing parties um throughout uh the city of Richmond Hill. And uh, just to have staff to identify a few locations, um, what's in my mind is Richmond Green and especially, um, and particularly maybe the downtown core, something close to it. Because um, what I'm picturing is uh, is is everybody coming out to the viewing parties and we bring businesses, uh, we bring business to the downtown core. I can see, imagine the the sidewalk cafe and everybody's cheering for their team. And Richmond is one of the most diverse cities, um, if not the most, um, in in all over Canada. So uh, we have, you know, you know, different ethnic um, fans, um, will be supporting their teams. And uh, hopefully, this will, this will, this will work out. I understand there might be some copyright um, cost. But uh, yeah, and I just want to explore the opportunity. Maybe we can strike a steering committee, um, economic development, involve um Richmond Hill Bottom Trade, um, so on and so on. So this is just an an ask to to look into it throughout twenty twenty-six operating budget. So hopefully, I can get a support from my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, next one, uh, Ca- Counselor uh, Car- Kara? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I fully support. I agree with you, something big that offers businesses, but also could we I agree with you, something big that offers businesses, but also could we consider where we do things like Moonlight Movies where there's just a big screen? I don't know what the technology is to do that. But I would love to see pop-up screens and games where, you know, every community has an opportunity. They don't necessarily have to travel anywhere. They can go somewhere in their own ward or their own community. So I'm super excited. And, you know, when you mentioned the diversity of this community, I'm sure no matter what the game is, we'll find people who are supporting a team or or the one side or the other. So I fully support this motion.
Thank you so much. Deputy Chair, Deputy Deputy Mayor, Godwin Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, councillor New, for making this suggestion. It just reminds me, just two weeks ago, I was actually at the Aurora Cultural Centre, whereas actually they do have a big screen in their kind of square on Young Street, just so far from Wellington. And that was the NBA final. So if Aurora can do it, so is Richmond Hill. So and I I really appreciate the mover's suggestion, perhaps it's an opportunity for either the Business BIA in the central core, of course, the staff are looking to it. But potentially, like we already have outdoor musical events quite often in the that particular outdoors courtyard, I would say, at the theater and potential other places. Of course, within the future, when we have the Dave Beresiktz Square Park there to be fully developed, that would be the location. And that's what we're looking for. But certainly I'm supportive of it. Yeah, perhaps staff could look into as as a mover suggests. Potentially, we also already got sponsors like, you know, Concerto Park, the movie's outdoor. So perhaps we can get some financial, I guess, support from them as well for that. It's very meaningful. After all, it's it's not that many games, as far as I know, in in Canada. But but it could be potential, not just the games being played in Canada, but all over to the final. So I'm in full support and hopefully that we get some sponsor and to help the city to relieve the financial, I guess, pressure. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, councillor Celis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and and my thanks to councillor Liu for bringing this forward. I think such a fantastic idea. Just, just one comment, that we we have previously used the theater for the Olympic Games to have a a public viewing. So that that could also be a consideration. While I know it's indoors, you know, sometimes our weather really is 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 not cooperative. But I do remember us doing that for the Olympic Games, and that that could be a good alternative as well. And I know that in Newmarket, just with this past Stanley Cup, they had an outdoor event because they claim Connor McDavid is theirs, but we do share him. And they had remarkable success with that with their open, open door watching for the for the Stanley Cup final. Unfortunately, it didn't end the way we wanted it to, but it it was very successful. So I just wanted to make those two points. Thank you again to councillor Liu for this.
Okay, next one, councillor Michael Su.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, councillor Liu, for proposing this motion. I totally understand. At the same time, hosting a FIFA viewing event would take extra resources and manpower from the city. If there's any councillor-led event still planned for next year, okay, I'm happy to step back from mine to help free up more resources for the city to take this lead and to support this motion. As the FIFA World Cup only comes once every four years, and the next year is the only one time hosted by Canada. So I'm willing to step back to to free up more resources for the city to host a mega one to build our image. So I fully support this initiative and let the city to explore the feasibility as a first step. I fully support this motion first. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Okay, I want to talk about this as well. So I'm a sports fan. So last time I see the sofa, it was FIFA. It was many years ago. I was standing inside a basement watching with my roommates. So it was exciting. I remember it was German, whatever. So it's really good opportunity to bring back that energies and sitting with a bunch of the fans together cheering and yelling and screaming together. So I'm looking for the parts as well. Okay, so the motion is on the floor. Any 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 opposed or in favor? Great, the motion passed. Next one is twelve point two, motion brought up by Mayor West for Heritage Grant Program. So Mayor, your floor.
Okay, thank you so much. So just a slight amendment to this too. In the motion, it talks about reporting back. I'd like to change that to quarter two of twenty twenty-six, Mr. Clark. I think that in consultation with the planning staff, I think that'll give them the time that they need to do the job right. But essentially, this is fairly simple. I think that the the Heritage Grant Program that we have is important one for people that own heritage properties. But I think that five thousand dollars right now doesn't go very far, particularly with a heritage home. So I think that if we're going to be supporting people that have, you know, that have heritage homes and and for the benefit of of our community. You know, when we have these heritage structures and and they're properly kept up, it really adds a lot to the area that they're around. So what I'd like staff to do simply is to just take a look and see what we can do, maybe benchmark other communities. Find out, you know, what kinds of programs that we can offer that would be effective in in achieving the goal of of assisting people that own heritage homes, keep them up in a way that's true to their heritage nature. But the money that we offer kind of helps to defray the additional cost of it being a heritage home as opposed to a regular home. And again, you know, the heritage designation does come with a specific benefit to the community. So I think that this is a good program. But I think it needs to be reviewed and and updated. So I'm just asking for a report back. And I think quarter two twenty twenty-six would be a timeline that would allow staff to do the job and do it properly. So that would be, that would be it for me. Thanks very much.
Any councillor? Okay, councillor Celivisk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and and thanks to Mayor West for bringing this forward. I think it's absolutely necessary. And not not only for heritage homes, but also for the commercial buildings that exist along Young Street, where we, that they are identified heritage buildings. And in order to to gussy up our village courts, these these grants pay a very big role in 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 making it a more welcome, a more welcoming place for for people to enjoy themselves and walk around. So I fully support this and I look forward to it coming back to H R H and Committee and Council for further discussion. So thank you, Mayor West.
Okay, okay, anyone else? Okay, councillor Scott Thompson?
Thank you very much. The only comment I I have here, and this would be for staff while they're reviewing this, would be it would be nice if we could look at the possibility of multi-year options depending on what the nature of the particular upgrade is that or, you know, renovations that, you know, a heritage home has to make. Because even even still, if we increase the amount, you know, it it may not help in certain cases. And I and I'm thinking about the Crosby House in the Coppola, that would be something that, you know, is going to be a significant you know, cost to the individual. So if it was something where they could say, could we do this over a multi-year so that they could benefit from a, you know, a better return, you know, that type of thing, you know. So I'm not sure exactly how you would look at that, but but just something to to keep in mind, that's all.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, the motion passed unanimously. Next one is twelve point four, the motion proposed by Mayor West as well for the Bond Lake O R C C R motion.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So just to summarize this motion, Bond Lake is a real jewel in in our community. And at the present moment, it's not really very, well, it's not officially open to anybody to be able to be in that area. But we all know that, you know, if we live in Richmond Hill and particularly up in Oak Ridge, that it's it's actually very well-used. And it's being used in a way that isn't necessarily very good for the environment. We have, you know, trodden trails around the perimeter of the lake, and that's causing erosion, trees to be impacted and ultimately perhaps dying because their roots are getting trampled. And, you know, the other thing is too, that when people get in there on these very rough paths over, you know, fallen trees and, you know, and so on and so forth. If something happens to them and they need assistance, it's very difficult for our fire and emergency services or any of our other first responders to actually get there. So and I I guess the final thing is that it's very obvious to anybody that lives around here how popular some of these lakeside types of facilities that we offer in Richmond Hill are, and that the demand is way, way higher than the supply. So it seems to me, and every time I pass Bond Lake, I look at that and I'm thinking, man, that really needs to be opened up for our for our residents and our, the public, to be able to enjoy the lake, to be able to walk around the lake safely, to be able to enjoy the water, to be able to enjoy being in a lake. Because honestly, when you're in that area, I mean, it really is a lot like being up in cottage country. And it's a, it's a really wonderful and easily accessible location in Richmond Hill that many, many, many people could use if the actual infrastructure was in there, the trails, the parking, the, you know, maybe a couple of boardwalk outlooks over the lake and so on and so forth. So what I've always kind of envisioned in that area is to is to have the owners of that land, which is Infrastructure Ontario, to invest the the money that is needed to open up those lands so that people can enjoy it and have an additional place to really kind of get in touch with nature and to have a really great experience, which is very, very much the kinds of things in Richmond Hill that we want people to have that happen to. So at the present moment, Infrastructure Ontario owns it, TRCA manages it, but TRCA doesn't have the money or the mandate to improve it, to achieve the vision that I was talking about. So what I would like to see is Infrastructure Ontario coming to the table, negotiating with us, TRCA, and perhaps whatever other stakeholders, to come up with the money to put in the infrastructure that's necessary. And that, you know, we, and then, you know, ultimately, there has been talk of making provincial parks in that area. The East Humber Headwaters Park, which is a little bit to the east of this. But, you know, I think that there is, it is worth a discussion to have a a talk about whether that entire area really needs to be put into some sort of a structure where it's it's a, it's an urban provincial park. And I know that they they're working on one right now in Uxbridge. And the Rouge Headwaters Park is a national park in Toronto. And I I really do think that the time is now for the province to look at investing in, you know, those types of facilities and particularly in places like Richmond Hill, so that people can use it, but also use it in a way that's safe. And then I guess the final thing I would say is there are also a lot of users in that area that are using that area in a way that is not appropriate and or safe. The parties that are going there are noisy sometimes. And, you know, the types of things that are going on deep into that area are not the kinds of things that we would want to see. But improving access to that area, I think, would help us to enforce some of the rules around the safe and best use of a piece of property like that. And and I guess just sorry, the final thing I would like to say is that, you know, Bond Lake, I think, is a key component of the larger parcel of land in that area. And I think together with the rest of the unbelievably beautiful trails and forests and 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 so on that stretch all the way from, you know, basically west of, or sorry, east of Young Street to west of, you know, Bayview and so on. You know, the potential there is great at the moment, but I think it could be even, you know, the reality of it could be even greater if we made some investments as into the Bond Lakes area to make the rest of that area even better than it is today. So I'm looking forward to that. I know that that will require a bit of negotiation, but I did want to get this in quickly because I think there is an opportunity, if this passes, for me to be able to advocate for this at A M O to the Minister of Infrastructure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next one, Regional Councillor Jody Palo.
Thank you. Wholeheartedly support the member motion, and I think it's timely and great that this request is being made. Given the TRCA's management contract needs to be renewed. And I like that. It's it's not just about Bond Lake. It's a coordinated request that that features the entire stretch. There's a significant land between Young and Bathurst, but really from Young, connecting over to Bayview and across and then towards Swan Lake and St. George. This is, this is an incredible opportunity. I'm sure the province should be able to see in in the GTA, seven million people, this is one of their real opportunities. But I think we have to be careful what we ask for. And, you know, if it's if it's too highly publicized or anything, it could be overrun. And you could maybe lose control a little bit if the province comes in and puts dollars, then you know, I I don't know how much our residents can enjoy it without being inundated from residents all over. They have to really address the parking issue. I know you're probably working on it with the TRCA. We have been for some time to get parking, adequate parking for all our trails, but particularly the bay in Stovall and particularly for Bond Lake. But I I I support anything that increases enforcement ability in in around this lake. The activity has to stop and it has to be monitored and there has to be more regulations. The fishing is dangerous. There's, there's, there's fires. There's alcohol consumption. There's, there's just misuse of the water itself. The more people that are there, you know, naturally chemicals going in there. You can't force people to take a shower before they swim, but, you know, the the dogs that are using the lake and and all all the different ways it it can be contaminated. It's it's so precious and it it's it's not, you know, it's very deep and 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 sustainable and an incredible spring, an incredible kettle lake, but it's small and and the reason it's remained pristine right now is because there are no homes backing onto it and it hasn't been used extensively. In the last hundred years, it's been able to really flourish as a virtually untouched natural lake. So I would support any any rules and then the enforcement thereof that that just just protect the lake. I think the feature we want to emphasize, the ability to walk through this, to walk around it, a lake that's completely surrounded by forest with a trail. That should be the the major use and purpose. Similar to Lake Wilcox, you know, any observatory deck or or, you know, boardwalk style, naturally constructed with with wood and like 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 they have further east. And on the other side of Bayview, east of Bayview, they've done a great job with the trails. The network should should be completed. Great foresight in two thousand and six for this council to create a coordinated trail system in conjunction with the TRCA. And that has to be enhanced and better regulated and enforced properly. But we we have to be really careful. I I hope we can play a strong role in advocating for our residents and making sure that the province does the does the right thing if they come in here and declare provincial park or take any, take more control. I trust the TRCA, but the province comes in and you know, promotes this for anything other than an opportunity for residents in the area to enjoy the nature and to preserve the nature, then it could be, it could be problematic. But I fully support the motion and the request. And I look forward to see where this goes next. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. Regional Councillor Jody Palo, next one, councillor Karis, Karis Davidson.
Thank you. I support this through Mr. Chair. I support this too. I think it's a real gem in the middle of the city, but what a lot of residents don't understand is it's not city property. There are issues at that at that location throughout the warmer weather, even in winter. And I do get requests from residents to ask why bylaw doesn't go because we, it's not city, it's not in the city area that we look after. So I I feel like I agree with you. If we make a big deal about it, we're I agree with you, if we make a big deal about it, we're gonna get more people coming, but the cat is kind of out of the bag if you go down Old Colony. Or even um Young Street, there are so many more visitors every year, so we have to support T R C A. Since it's their their area to look after and hopefully they'll be at some point money for some kind of rule enforcement, because I know. Mayor and I have recently spoken with T R C A folks and they don't have the money to uh police it, so to speak, and to make sure people aren't setting fires or. Whatever it is they're doing, so I fully support this and I hope, I hope the province tends to it with some urgency, because every year we let it go by, the area gets degraded even more, so. Those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, any councillor want to have comments? No, okay, all in favor? Okay, the motion passed. So next one, eleven point eleven, so emergencies? No, okay, the the chair, okay, the motion is there, anyway, okay, councillor Ali, okay, all in favor? Perfect, the motion passed.